Not this room.
I'm sorry.
You don't have that many drag marks on me.
Go again.
It's a little fast for this time.
Yeah, yeah.
It was Saturday.
So.
Testing.
Here.
Good morning, how are you all?
It's fine.
I do have a personnel report that was presented online. And I have four sets.
Sets. There's.
I think I've got them.
I got them.
Have you got them?
Yeah.
Okay, is this all yours then? No, I just get signature pages.
Yeah, they emailed them to us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you guys want to be eating that one? I think this is yours too. Do you have any certification revenue?
No, there's none. There's no amendment changes by funds, investment report, there's none. We have got budget downloaded into Ncode, so we should be able to hopefully have everything ready by next week.
That'd be helpful.
Yes, it would. Yeah, we're trying. And then there's no financial condition.
That doesn't sound very good. Okay. Very hopeful that we have no financial condition.
Well, we don't have a report, I'm sorry.
Okay. Kathy, you got something for us to sign?
I do. I don't know, do we have any open meetings, Public Information Act or cybersecurity certificates?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Public purchasing acknowledgements?
Hmm. Think those are all taken care of.
Okay.
And just so the court knows, tax gonna start charging us five bucks a pop on the cybersecurity next year.
Well, I'm like motion only, send it in.
Okay, motion by Mr. Rain, second by Mr. Maxwell. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. I can almost go to these documents and the first one I signed looks like my signature and then by the time I get to the end, it doesn't look like anything.
I'll start out.
Don't we still have a chance to write?
You see them?
See them?
Show sixty now, yeah.
That should be nice.
More, wouldn't it?
Did you get any down here, Tony?
No, a few dropped.
Man, we got enough to, just enough to get the cars dirty, it's the only thing we got. Now, it's under the lighting, about four inches.
Yeah.
But that's it.
It's gonna skip brand. Burned the thunder, did a little thing at home next quarter this week.
Okay.
You were good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, four A, burn ban, last lifted on three six. Leave it off?
I'm good.
I'm good. Okay, nine eleven update and corporate dispatch update, Sheriff?
Nothing.
Okay, C, district clerk to file the order setting salaries. Ms. Henry, you wanna come up?
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
I'm well, how are you all doing?
We're good.
Okay. So, my office received an order from Judge Harrod setting salaries and I have copies, if y'all would like copies if you need it.
Sure. Thank you.
Would y'all like me to read it or y'all just wanna view it? Yeah, thank you.
I do have a question. What increase is this? Do you know?
I don't have that information. No, I do not.
Do you know, Sonia, the increases?
I don't have any idea.
Percentage wise?
It's a little different for each of them. Some of them it's over ten percent, some of them it's a little less. It's a difference for everybody.
I knew it was more than three percent.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, what do we need on this particular deal?
Accepted as into, as filing.
As presented or whatever. Okay. Motion to accept the salaries is set. Do what?
I'm not gonna make it.
Okay.
I'm with James, I don't know either.
Alright.
Aye.
Okay, motion dies for object. The, it's gonna die from lack of any movement on the court's part. Um, which will table this at least for now, so.
We'll talk about it next week.
Okay. It's healthy, thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Sheriff, discussing considered purchasing generators for dispatch towers.
Well, once again, we're talking about these generators. Um, of course, we thought everything's good to go and it still is, except now they've come back and said they want us to front the money for them. I guess they've got eighteen generator projects and better look like they're all gonna be approved, so they were looking at borrowing over a million dollars to fund all of it. Normally what happens when you do these grants and all that stuff, they fund it and then they get reimbursed and we just have the equipment deal. So now, they're asking if we front the money and then they'll reimburse us after the generator's installed. I asked them how long, he said it'd be about, he's guesstimating about ninety days between the generators being installed and the check reimbursement to us. They also said that most, it looks like they're gonna be, he can't swear a hundred percent, but it looks like they're maybe going back to the ninety-ten split instead of the seventy-five-twenty-five split, which would be great for us, but he doesn't know. But that's what, what he's thinking that it's gonna go.
Do you know what line you need this to come out of?
Uh, it would be, we had already put the, the other stuff under the building maintenance, is where she had put the, the matching. She'd already put that there, so I would guess it'd need to go under the building maintenance.
What's that line item, Jason, please?
Let me find it on this new one here.
That's for dispatch building maintenance, right?
Yes, sir. Well, I'm sorry, y'all, here it is. Building tower maintenance, zero-three-nine, five-six-two-zero, three-six-one-zero-zero. Are these the new numbers?
Yes.
Yeah, that's it. So, we need to declare an emergency, 'cause you'll have to declare the emergency, a grade public necessity for the purchase. And then we can expend the money and then get the money back.
These have not been final approved yet through them. They're still waiting, but they said that, that, they haven't had one denied yet. And they, they're not expect, of course, I gave y'all the letter, they're not expecting any to be denied either, so. I don't know if it'll happen, you know, waiting on the federal government, so I don't know if it'll be by the end of this fiscal year or go into the next one. By the time it's done, I have no idea.
So we don't know how, what the timeframe is?
Well, we gotta wait on their approval.
One, the thing is, if we're spending it out of fund balance, as for the emergency, when it comes back in, it'll go back into fund balance. So you know what I'm saying, it's, it's not.
Yeah.
It's not the biggest, that big of a deal.
Okay.
For that. But going into this time of the year, the, with the storms and all that, we have made it past the fifteenth, which was the last tornado, so. Except for the one down in Champaign, them had last year at Truitt's.
Yeah. That was in December.
Yeah. I'll, I'll make the motion to declare an emergency for the expenditure, expenditure of ninety-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars for generator upgrades at the towers.
Well, second. Second, motion by Mr. Rain, second by Mr. Maxwell, to declare an emergency to be able to move the ninety-five thousand or so out of fund balance in the building maintenance for the towers. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
Thanks, guys. I'll let you know when it comes in.
Now, I'll make a motion to move the ninety-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars out of fund balance to line item zero-three-nine, five-six-two-zero, three-six-one-zero-zero.
Which is the dispatch?
Which is the dispatch, building and tower maintenance.
Say it. Motion by Mr. Rain, second by Mr. Wilson, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
Appreciate it, guys. I'll let y'all know how it goes.
Yeah, keep me in the loop if you don't mind.
I imagine it'll be in time of the.
Okay. Alright, E, considering any lease agreement with Rico? Kathy Jonto?
It is time for my lease, well, my lease will be up in July, so we're gonna go ahead and extend a new one. It's for thirty-six months. The process went up just a little bit and it is reflected in the new budget that I presented. So, question. Going up.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
We use a copy machine a lot, so. Yeah, I would lose time with that.
Uh, F, open, we've sent both contracts.
See, GPS, all bids were due late January the ninth. Okay, this is the fifth. And his, I have. Point zero-four-five, freight charges point zero-four-five, total freight and profit. That's for regular unloaded. Dad is the same, also clear, same. I also have a conflict interest questionnaire rolled out inside.
Yes, I used to point zero.
And doors, freight charges point zero-four-nine for ready. For a total freight and profit of point one-zero. Freight charge, margin of. Nine-six. Of the ethics.
To receive.
Motion, we go with, can we go with J.T. Horn, Q.
J.T. Horn, second, second by Mr. Maxwell. Say aye? Oppose, same, motion carries. Um.
According to. According to local. Members necessary to. Nine public members. Has no voting rights. And the public members must be residents of a county. The list that was provided to me by the district clerk is the grandeur of the county. So, there are twelve of those. So, y'all just let me know how you would regard it for the committee.
We go with a nine public member?
Okay, motion by me. Second by, nine public members. Oppose, same sign.
Okay, then, next one is to draw the names of the potential salary grievance committee. So, since there's only twelve, I'm gonna ask the judge to draw. We'll then again notify them, they have to accept the request.
So, is it nine or twelve?
Figure out, twelve. No, we're drawing all twelve, but nine will serve.
Okay.
Yes.
First nine to volunteer?
Yes.
Okay, I've drawn them. Is there twelve in there?
Twelve in here?
No, there, no, there, you got, you got to figure out.
Need to read the names.
Uh, Carol Williams, that's K-A-R-R-O-L-L. And Kendall Bass.
D-R-B, Bass B-A-S.
Cookie Key. Ryan Mitchell.
Sorry, what's last name?
Mitchell, M-E-C-H-L-I.
Neckline.
Neckline, sir.
N-E-C-H-L-I.
Sue Whaley. Emmanuel Martinez. Kelly Wellmaker. Doyle Russell. Peggy Andrews. Barbara White. Last one is Leslie January. Last one is Leslie January.
So once the, uh, committee is formed, I'll give the order, I think.
Okay, is there any emergency members?
There's no.